There's always a bunch of guys there. And some of their projects, one of them also kind of get to make that call.
Yeah.
I mean, you know.
Even with the Women's Transitional House, this is the same guy, yes, Women's Transitional House, that's right behind him, which is funny.
Oh, it can't be. Yeah.
He pissed the fit about that.
Which is crazy. And why would he do that?
Now you're going to do something so you can gain and make money.
And he should be.
Exactly.
Okay. All right. All right. Please take your seats. We'll have a meeting come to order. Roll call, we, everybody is here except Commissioner Waddell is out of town and won't be with us this evening. All others are in attendance. Item number two, at the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda of July 7th, 2020.
When we get to the consent agenda in the regular session, I'd like to pull the collective bargaining agreement and talk about that a little bit before we vote on it.
Okay.
We don't need to do that in study session, that's, we can do that in regular session, but I just want to make sure that.
Okay.
I don't forget about it and, you know, accidentally make a motion to consent agenda without.
Okay. I had a question.
Yep.
About under parks, trail sign design. Have we seen that? Has that been before the park board?
No.
That's, that's what the sign is?
Right. That's not the framework that's going to be with it, actually. We just, when you get our tracks in for our form of our post.
Where would they be placed?
That's on the, that's the study session 3.2 item.
Yeah.
We have a whole study session. There's a patient on that tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's part of that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the 3.2 item on study session.
Thank you, Ben.
You are welcome, sir.
All right.
You're making Kelly jump over there and get nervous.
Yeah. Yeah. And there's some other questions I'm going to have later on, so, but I'll, I can ask you in privately. Okay. Any others? Okay. I would like to introduce a new, new face in the crowd today. Colonel Danielson is the new wing commander out at Vance Air Force Base. Just took command last week. So this is his first meeting with us, so welcome, sir.
Welcome.
Yep. All right. Item number three, study items. 3.1, discuss community project to renovate the trail drive-in.
Yeah, this, this is a project that's come up recently. It's a great community project. One of our entrepreneurial spirits here in town, Tony Whedon, has taken that project on with everything else and he's here tonight. I know I attended a presentation recently that he had. Lisa Powell was there and Commissioner Waddell was there as well and thought it'd be great for him to come and inform the Commission about what he's doing.
Okay, good. Sir, come forward.
Stand up here.
Sure.
Super. Thank you all for having me. I appreciate it. It's kind of neat to have everybody here. You know, Lisa is a big supporter, you're a big supporter, and then it sounds like, you know, Jonathan's out of town. 16 years ago, I came in for pilot training. I know I look like I'm 16 years old. I still get carded at rated R movies, which is funny that we're talking about movies. But 16 years ago, you know, I came through pilot training, stayed here as an instructor pilot, and they ended up renovating the Duke Gate at base. And as I was driving into base, I had to get, tie, take a back route, and we saw this old drive-in, so I pulled in to find out if I could get tickets for that night with my wife and come to find out it had been closed down for like 30 years. So for 16 years, it's been going on in my mind, well, when COVID happened and we're doing all the social distancing and everything, I thought, I'm just going to drive out there and see what it looks like, and it's in utter disarray. So just talking with the community, a lot of people, there was a lot of interest, we threw out some Enid buzz, we had 1,200 comments that people were interested in having it. I'm kind of an action taker, so I said, you know, we could potentially bring a nonprofit together, see if we could crowdfund the community. As of today, there's 266 backers locally. We're at about 9% of the goal. And Gerald and I, we kind of had a little town hall, asked him if he'd come and speak. He thinks it'd be neat for the community. I think it'd be neat for the community. Most of you know me from Base Connect, that's my 100% full-time job and leading the team there, but I thought it'd be something that we could give back to the, the city of Enid. So that is the trail drive-in in a nutshell. We plan on making it a nonprofit with a lot of neat ideas in regards to potentially putting an ice rink in front. My wife is a figure skating coach, to potentially a climbing mall on the backside. There's a whole lot of neat events that we think we could do out there, but kind of make it a community project. So I'm happy to answer questions. I, I hope I brought enough really cool bookmarks for everyone. If it's all right, I'll hand a couple of those out if that's okay. But what, does anyone have any questions for me?
Sure, Tony, you might explain what you're trying to do in the first stage with raising money and you're trying to get the land, I think, and the theater and.
Yeah, so we have a contract on the land. The land is 200,000. We're raising 250,000. The reason for that was for legal, to clear the land, and then also all the trinkets that come along with crowdfunding, whether it be a sticker, or a tee-shirt, or a mug, or a popcorn bowl. But we're trying to crowdfund it, right? So we're trying to bring the community together, so, I mean, 50,000 people saw our first video. If everyone had just pitched in $5, we would have already been on to the, to the next phase. The next phase of Phase Two is, is getting the projector screen and building kind of the, you know, the little hut that you can get your stuff at session-wise, and then Phase Three is, is the launch, so having a kind of a big launch party. Right now, we're still in Phase One. Obviously, we won't move to Phase Two unless we raise the funds during Phase One. I think I'm going to get a 30-day extension. We're about five days away from our initial kind of launch, but I think we're going to be able to get a 30-day extension to see if we can't raise that Phase, Phase One funding.
Great question. Is your intent to set up a 501(c)(3) and transfer title to the nonprofit?
That is exactly our intention. So the neat thing is, when we threw it out there, we started getting, like I said, a ton of buzz, so we had people donate to, to clear all the land for free. We've had Andrew Eubanks locally donate his legal services to set all the nonprofit up and do all the leak work behind it. So people have kind of been coming out of the woodwork and, man, I grew up going to this, it'd be so cool to have it in the community, you know. It's not really a big moneymaker, so I'm thinking there's a couple of communities I've found out that have done their own community projects, like the theaters, so they have volunteers that come in and kind of run the theaters, so that's kind of the, the vision behind it as well. Okay. Other questions?
So, $200,000 for the property?
Correct.
How many acres is that?
It's 10 acres. And, and the screen is still on it, you know, with the 80 mile an hour winds that we've had here recently and all the tornadoes in stuff Oklahoma, it's, it's still standing strong, so it probably needs a good coat of paint on it, but it's, it's staying pretty solid, which is pretty amazing.
And if you run short of the goal, that happens?
Yeah, so basically, great, go ahead. Sorry, I didn't.
You know.
I was going to say, yeah, so, so a lot of people ask that question, is if we don't meet the goal, then nothing happens. So people are, their pledges right now, so the way the website works and crowdfunding works, is you put a pledge towards it. If we don't meet the goal, then your, your debit or credit card doesn't get charged, so it just, the project just goes away. So it's better than accepting money and then have to give everybody their money back if you don't meet the goal. So the idea was, let's take action, let's see if the community really wants to come together. There's a couple of businesses that have, you know, put some, some pledges our direction, and so, great question.
What other fundraiser activities do you have? For instance, they got First Friday, which is really Second Friday. You guys doing something for that?
So we, we got 2,000 bookmarks, and we've had a lot of volunteers just kind of picking them up and handing them out. There were some people handing them out at the farm celebration, I'm not sure if they ran out or not. I was down with, I'm originally from Chickasha, so I was with my family down there. But there's a couple of events that we, we are planning in the future. If we can get the extension for the next 30 days, we plan on starting to go out to local businesses. So we've, you know, raised from community, a lot of Facebook stuff, but I also know it's, it's a hard time, you know, COVID-19, a lot of people were very, you know, kind of scared, some people lost their jobs, they don't know financially where they're at, and so, you know, it may not be the best time for it, but I thought we'd at least give it a good college try.
How do you source your movies that you would show?
So, you know, that's going to be for the movie guy. I'm more of the entrepreneur visionary guy, you know. I've, I've asked a couple of questions about, you know, what are the expenses going to be for the movies? I've been told that some older movies, it's a whole lot less cost for the rights, and so you can get them out there for a whole lot cheaper. I've heard the newer movies can be upward, upwards of 90% of the box office goes back to the movie, you know, whoever created the movie versus 10% being there. Couple visions and ideas of, is creating like a membership to where you pay a monthly recurring membership, so we have a lot of members to keep the, just to drive it open, maintain, but as part of that building, a really amazing, kind of like Leonardo's, but probably not as nice as theirs, but a really nice, you know, playground for kids, so you can bring your family there, and because you're a member, you can get in and, you know, play on the playground, and have other things besides just the theater there.
We've got a movie guy. We're working with somebody to build a theater here in town, and so.
Right.
Either Lisa or Gerald would be able to probably hook you up with him, and he can tell you about how to get movies.
I talked to Kyle Williams on the phone a couple of days ago and kind of asked a couple of questions, and he said the same thing. So, you know, eventually finding that, you know, right now, it's just the focus has been on Phase One, because if we don't raise the funds and get the land, so we can clear it out, and I, I really feel like, once we get the land, you know, I, I want to do all the stop-motion cameras, because the, the trees are, you know, 40 years old, and so do a couple of days of that, so you can see, oh my goodness, they're actually doing something, and I think more of the community will want to come in, and, and people will come out and kind of say, wow, they're actually doing something, I want to be part of this. So the goal right now is just to get to Phase One, then we can start figuring out some of those details of, you know, one of the first movies I know is going to be Twister, because someone's already paid for a private showing of Twister, and, you know, it's got that one scene where the, the tornado comes in and takes out the drive-in, so like, you know, I think a lot of people want to see that, so. Any other questions? Sweet, we'll all walk around and hand these out, if that's all right with everyone. I hope I have enough for everyone.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for the questions.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Tony. Appreciate it. Thank you. See him here. A couple. While he's passing those out, may I ask a question about the, the park trash truck that, is that being utilized yet, or is it here, or?
Yes, it is here. We just got it on the road on Tuesday.
Okay.
We had to do some training before we stuck someone out there, because it's on board. We should go start getting calls.
So do we drive that into the parks like the old one, or how will we?
No, we're still moving them out. We don't want to track that up into parks. We're going to be trained out through the roadside, but we're going to be able to do it more often than our trash guys, because they have their ready routes, so they were just trying to help us keep up.
So we'll use the same receptacles?
Yes. Same receptacles, it's, it's just like a big trash truck. It's a small truck, it's got the mechanical arm, picks them up, dumps them into the dumpster. It's got a packing box.
Great.
We will come to Park Board and make a presentation there next Tuesday, too, and talk about it, because I, I think that'd be important, so.
Yep.
Or he'll be out, but Everett, you can help me get that on there and have somebody there to present, Park Board.
Excellent. All right. Good. Okay, item 3.2, discuss trail signs prototype.
Mayor and Commissioners, a number of us were commissioned to look at the trails, to look at getting trail signage. We had already done branding, of course, and we'd done wayfinding, so we were trying to keep it in the same branding look. It was Scott Moore, Assistant City Manager, Corey Buller was Parks and Rec Supervisor, myself, and Everett's been on it also. And we've had Kelly with Hive Appeal was the designer of it. So we looked at, first of all, we looked at several trails, like Oklahoma City, some of their trails. Scott, we, we, we did a lot of research, we had a lot of different varieties of trails, and we kind of went and talked with Hive Appeal, became what we were going to show you. So if you see from the back of the room, you can see the, an example of one of what we come with the park, Crossland Park. Now, this is not on the main trail system, but we thought because it has a trail at Crossland, that we should also do one there. And, want to talk about the Crossland?
It's basically around two and a half mile trail running. I don't know how many loads of pictures you got.
Derek on there?
I got all of them on there, but, want to talk about Crossland. You can see the one in the back, that's an example of, of the actual look, but not the actual post.
Right. Right. The post is going to be a four-by-four post with a trex, it's almost like a vinyl or PVC type, that will slide over top of it, and it'll have a nice cap on top, so it's.
Cool.
Be protected where we don't lose the lumber around it.
And this is a sign that we can print or adjust if we need to in-house?
Yes.
We can print it, yes.
So that's an example of Crossland Park, you can see there on your screen. And here's the trail system that we currently have. So we started each segment, or mile, or depending on mile or mile and a half, we named them according to the street. So the first one is Garland, as you can see there, and of course, with each sign, if I can, that thing's not lighting up, but we have a smaller sign that shows that segment. So the Garland segment is on your right bottom, but you can still maintain and see the entire scope of the trail system.
Okay.
That's one example. Second example here is Oakwood, which is the second segment. Same, and all of these are basically the same, you know, you're going to have a different look at the segment that's on the bottom right. Cleveland Trailhead, as you can see there, and then we went the park, Meadow Lake Park. So Meadow Lake Park, of course, there's a lot going on there, so, and we'll be able to, in the future, we'll be able, other part of the trail will be able to add to this. And we also discussed that we will probably not only have this sign at Meadow Lake, but we probably will just pull out the bottom right itself, kind of like we did with Crossland here, just the park, maybe put that on the north si, south side, just that part. Here's Van Buren. So they basically all look the same, except the bottom right. There's Monroe and Selby, and we have all of those, the green areas that you'll see are sidewalks, the magenta or reddish color that's in our branding are the actual trail, but the green is the sidewalks.
The, the magenta between that, that Broadway, I mean Broadway sidewalk.
Well, when I say the green, it's still actually trails, the actual trail system, even though that is sidewalk on Broadway, so that's why that color may be.
Maybe I don't understand the differentiation in that case. I mean, I, I thought that what we were doing to connect the football stadium to downtown was basically what we did on East Broadway, where we'd have, you know, sidewalk that was part of the trail system, and, and it's all, I mean, what, what's the differentiation there?
Right now, the differentiation is, is that's new. It, it is intended to be part of the trail system, and we will denote it as such. This entire presentation, really, and the signage effort, came out of a study session back in February, I think. I remember that one.
Yeah.
I figured you might. It was an effort to better note the trails and where they go. I think with what Derek is showing you now, there's at least nine different signs planned, and what he is saying is that as we add to the trail, we'll update the maps and put it on there. So, so our intent i- is to add that sidewalk, and, and that's probably just something that I need to clarify.
Okay.
Also, you're going to see that there are connections to the university.
Yeah.
Working on a meeting with, with them soon. I've reached out to Dr. Evans and Dr. McMillan, we just haven't got a date set yet with everybody, but the effort is to be all-encompassing of, of what's trail, whether it was designated that way on the master trail system or not. If it's part of our trail, we want to note it on the sign, so people know when they're out and about walking, so.
Awesome. And so we'll get input from NOC on, on how they want to route it through their campus on the, and they may not want to go along Main Street, they may want to cut, you know, through the middle of NOC or, or whatever.
Yes.
They have, they've got paths crisscrossing all of it.
I believe.
Whatever they want to highlight.
I believe on the last slide, we have already denoted what we think, but yes, we will ask them what they think.
We have it going along Main Street, and, and where it deadens there, it may be simpler, just cut through the middle of campus, but I kind of feel like whatever they want is.
They also have their own signage standards, so we'll probably show them our sign and figure out.
They've got some great signage on campus. They've done a nice job, NOC and Northwestern integrating theirs together.
So, this Fifth and Broadway there, you see on your screen, and the next segment is the University and Broadway segment, as you can see, and we kind of notated things that are around the university. Any other questions?
Just to follow up, too, I don't, maybe it wasn't, might I be clear? The two blocks of additional sidewalk from Selby Stadium to connect to the school, to connect up to State Street are complete now, so that's exciting.
Yeah.
I know that, I believe we'll have a change order on the next agenda to do several more blocks north of Gharriett to connect to Broadway.
And, and we're using the pedestrian intersect, are we?
Yes.
We're cutting through the police parking lot, is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Cool. That's going to be great.
We also have a project working on Grand, as you know, with the light there, and, and so that'll be, I believe we're working not only on, on the northeast light, but we're going to work on the other light, too, so that we can have a crossing there at some point.
Great.
At some point, that would probably be what we would consider the main crossing, but in any event, the sidewalk we're building and the mid-block or the one in front of the, between the fire and admin are sufficient.
That may be, that one may be a while at Grand.
Yeah. It, it may be, it's in, it's in the budget for this year, so, good news.
Okay. Good. All right. Thanks, Derek. Great job. I really like the signs. I like, they look professional, they look really good, so we've got a great system, and I think that just adds to it, so appreciate that. All right. Item 3.3, discuss transition from animal control to animal welfare.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Warren Wilson, I'm the Lieutenant that's over the Animal Welfare Division. As you guys know, we recently switched our name from Animal Control to Animal Welfare, and there's a little bit of history behind that, and the Chief asked that we come and talk to you about that a little bit. In 2012, Chief O'Rourke hired a part-time adoption coordinator. At the time, our live release le- rate, which means adoptions, going back to the original owners like that, was 30% for dogs and 5% for cats. That is not a good number, those are not good numbers for us. After that 2012 hire, our rate, our live release rate went up to 63% for dogs and 15% for cats in 2014. Seeing that transition and that improvement, the Chief changed that to a full-time adoption coordinator position. And, and by the time 2019 came around, last year, our numbers were 89% for dogs and 84% for cats. This year to date, with, with the work that we've done with animal rescues and what these folks have done, I'll introduce here in a second, we are above 90% for dogs and cats.
Great.
That is a little bit of a golden ring for, for our kind of organizations, because by the time you get to that point, you're adopting out every adoptable animal. There's very, there's very little we can do after that. So that's what we've, we've been chasing for years. A lot of this work is, has been due to SPCA, Forever Friends, Kirkpatrick Foundation, and literally hundreds of other organizations we work with across the country. During a meeting that the Chief had with a couple of those organizations, it was brought up that our current name of animal control was not really what our mission is. Our mission really is about animal welfare now, and we thought that was a great idea to, to change that name. So we changed the name on the sign, and we think just changing the name on the sign will maybe help get our message out a little bit that that's what we do. I've had people ask me why we don't adopt dogs, or don't adopt cats. That's almost all we do at this point. We do a lot of that, so we're hoping that helps get the message out there a little bit more. And with that, we just wanted to explain that what, the name welfare, the word welfare more accurately describes what we're doing now. And with that success, I wanted to introduce our animal welfare supervisor, Alan Elder, and our adoption coordinator, Erica Huffman. And we would open up for any questions if y'all had any.
Don't have any questions, just want to congratulate you all on, on the great success story. I'm an animal lover, I know a lot of people that are animal lovers, and I can't tell you how pleased I am with, with what you've done with the program, so. Chief, good on you for being the visionary, and, and good on y'all for making it happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one other question. I know in the past, you will come out if, if you have an unfriendly visitor, like a skunk or armadillo, and are you still doing that under your umbrella, or?
Under the live release umbrella? If, if we can, we'll relocate them. There are some, we have some agreements with some private landowners that will, that will allow them, because they actually do some good things for them. If they're ill, we do not. If they're ill or injured in some way, we, we do not live release.
Really, my question is, if you have a problem, though, you still respond?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
There was a little bit of interruption in service with the COVID, but we are back to full operations, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
You can still come out and, and you will lend or loan a trap, isn't that correct? A live trap?
As long as, yes.
I mean, I did that in the past and caught armadillos and skunks, and you removed all of them for me, and I was grateful.
Absolutely.
And as soon as I saw this on the agenda last night, I was, I thought it was brilliant. Great idea, Brian, and, and for the entire department. It's just awesome.
Well, we're real proud of these folks. Very much.
Actually, we have two traps down Governor Springs Park for some skunks.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
That worked on your experience.
They're taken care of, so.
Okay. Nice work.
Thank you very much for having us.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. All right. It was kind of a quick study session tonight, so we'll, we're going to adjourn now, and we'll meet back together at 6:30 for the regular meeting. All right.
All right.